Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for September 11th, 2018. The first item is going to be salute the flag. I've invited the on-duty staff in the Fire Department and the Fire Chief, Chief Johnson, to come over and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance for the 17th anniversary of 9/11, where 343 firefighters and 60-plus police officers, along with thousands of Americans, lost their lives. So.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A quick moment of silence, please. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item we have is a General Assistance Public Hearing. Jennifer?
So, we have advertised for the last two weeks the General Assistance Public Hearing. There are some minor changes in the state's numbers. Just to go through them, the food max increased by $1 for singles and $4 based on households. There were no changes in the heating, fuel, or the electricity, personal care. The housing maximums did change quite a bit. They lowered the overall amount that someone could make to qualify, and there were also no supplemental changes for families that have more than five children. So, General Assistance is a large database that lists out, you know, based on county, how many people live in the home, how many kids, and what they qualify for. So, once a year, the state reviews that, and we're required to publicize it and have a public hearing should anybody have any questions or concerns on those guidelines, although they're set by the state before the town can adopt them. And I haven't had any questions or concerns since we've advertised it, and proof that it went into the paper and met all the state requirements. So, you can close the public hearing if there's no...
Anything else on public hearing?
No.
Okay. Do you hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a...
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to close this.
I'll second that.
Move to second to close the public hearing. All in favor? All opposed? Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'm sorry. I just want to make sure for clarity that knowing you didn't really ask anybody from the public if they wanted to speak on the public hearing.
Back to the public hearing quickly. Anyone from the public wish to speak on it?
Just want to have it documented. Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. So, we have... Do I hear a second on the approval of the agenda?
Yes, I'll second that.
Seconded it? Moved to seconded it? Any further discussion? Call for a vote? All in favor? All opposed? Minutes of the last meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of August 28th and last week's meetings.
I'll second that.
Moved to seconded to approve... That's all the ones we have in the past, right?
Yes, the last two weeks.
Yep, the past two weeks. Moved to seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote? All in favor? All opposed? Department Heads Committee Chair Update.
What's that?
None. Great. Hold of Business. We have Road Association Funds.
Yeah, so, we did get an opinion from the attorney. She thought she had recommended a few changes on the application, but at the same time, she spoke with Jeff Dennis of the DEP, and he suggested that we actually do the process in reverse, where we have somebody like the Road Commissioner or the Road Committee use the watershed survey to pinpoint which roads actually need attention on their roads. And so, we didn't have a chance to discuss it as a board, but that was Jeff's, of the DEP's, recommendation was to actually do the process in reverse and have the town pick the roads that need to be worked on, that are causing the most damage based on the watershed.
The ones that were dire need, I guess, the ones that, you know, needed it the most.
I know that Whitney Baker had just approached us with some watershed survey with private roads on that, so that's something we could go by if that's the route we decided to go.
My only question is, what do we do when someone comes, when one of the road associations comes forward to us?
I think...
How do we plug it in at that point?
I think at that point, we give them... I think we can do it both ways, to be honest. We could, you know, have them fill out this, the application, but at the same time, we could be proactive in trying to find issues ourselves.
Right.
Is there a reason why we can't use both methods?
Probably not. I mean, I want to make... The public came forward to us with this, so I'll make darn sure that they're...
Right.
You know, forefront in it, so... And with everything else we have going on, I don't know if we have time to go out and look for the issues. I mean, it's great that they come forward, and I'm sure...
I mean, if we got a hold of Whitney, I mean, she could, you know, at least give us the watershed, the newest watershed, you know, recommendations as far as... And they probably have themselves. I know they had a list of, I don't know if they got it from Whitney or not, but that told, you know, which were the worst, you know, who needed it, who didn't need it, so... And I would think that would be a guideline that they're going to follow anyhow.
Sure.
And I suppose we could ask somebody else.
Yeah, they usually have a map showing all the hotspots.
Yeah.
And when I worked with York County Soils back in the day, what we'd do is we'd pinpoint those hotspots, because normally where those hotspots were, that's where we could get grant money, and they'd work on the grant money. But I would think that if you're trying to get the spots that are the worst, you would look at that, you know, where DEP's saying this is where we ought to go, and try to, you know, put some of the monies towards those spots first, prioritize them, I would think. And then, obviously, I would think that we could work in conjunction with, you know, if the Road Committee or the road associations, you know, work in conjunction with everybody on those hotspots first, without depleting all the money for the smaller stuff at the same time. That's what I would suggest.
Thank you.
I'm Marie Langley-Shores. Was this person from the DEP familiar with 3106?
He was very familiar. In fact, he was excited that there's a town that's actually using this process to help the private roads.
Well, a lot of the roads have already done a road survey, a watershed survey, like our road, and we have already the data of where the pollution was and everything else. And I don't know what he's asking for, because it's already been dated.
Maybe he was just mentioning that, why wait for somebody to apply when you have a watershed survey that you could, you know, be proactive and use that to target the hotspots?
Well, that's...
I don't know. We didn't...
The purpose of this was to take the watershed survey that we have done, and we have identified the pollution, and come to you for private money with those recommendations that are in the watershed survey.
That's what he's saying, you know, just...
Well, I know, but it's already been done. I mean, the work has been done.
Oh, he's not telling us to do another watershed survey?
No, no, he's just saying, make sure that, you know, that's kind of a guideline you follow.
Well, that's in the thing. It says you've got to comply with 3106, and that's where the... I just don't, I don't, I don't follow how that, how it's going to work. I mean, it just seems to be muddy in the waters.
I didn't talk to him, but I think maybe one, part of his thought might be, why wait for someone to come to us when we've already got some of the data, and we can go out and start this?
But, but you don't have the data. We have the data on the private roads. We are the ones that have the data.
I think that, well, I don't know, I...
She's got it right here from you.
Survey, list of survey sites. I mean, is this not a survey that lists high, low, medium, and what work can be done?
Do you have all of them? Do you have Langley-Shores Drive and Lakeside Drive?
Aren't they on this?
Huh?
Aren't they in one of these links?
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know. You don't have them all.
I could get them, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, what? How are we going to progress from there?
I would assume that, you know, meet with the road commissioners and the Road Committee, target the hotspots.
But, okay, let's just...
Okay.
I'll just talk about what I know. We went for a 319 grant because we found we had pollution when they did the watershed survey. We have changed our culverts. We have crowned our road. We have done the pollution control measures already. What we're looking for in that law, it allows the town to give you some maintenance to maintain what we've already done. That's what the law is stating. It says maintenance and repairs. And, you know, we've already accomplished that. All we're looking for is aid to, for the private roads to continue not polluting, making sure the roads are crowned. The ditches, we have the ditches. You clean the ditches out. Make sure they stay armored.
I'm not sure where we're not agreeing on this.
I think what he's worried about is that maybe they've already done the work, and maybe somebody else is going to come along who hasn't done any work, and is that what you're saying? And afraid that maybe your road's not going to get anything? I mean, you've already done the work. I would think that your road's going to be definitely eligible.
I know. I just don't know how, if, I don't know, I just don't follow. What are you going to put? When you read that report on Langley-Shores Drive, what are you going to say that we need the money for?
Well, I might not see that you need it, but you can, you can apply. You know what I'm saying? You, I'm, I'm not...
You have to apply to get it, right?
Yeah.
So...
I think we can use both methods instead of waiting. Like, what if you guys are the only one to apply? But we know there are roads out there that need repair, private roads that need repair with this, with this title, 23, Section 3, 3101, or whatever, or 3106.
We would want to do both, right?
Yeah, I think we could do both.
You, and if there was other areas.
To protect, maybe the road association's not recognizing it, but the DEP priority watershed list is.
The DEP priority watershed, what does that do? If you read that, what is it? It's just a watershed report on the lakes that are either in danger or...
Okay, so I'm looking at a list of survey sites. Right here, I've got, let's see, private road, medium, gravel road with gully erosion, add new surface material, reshape diverters, add to buffer on Point Road.
Point Road's a town.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Well, it says it's listed as a private on this. That needs to be fixed.
Okay.
Private road, Tote Road, has, its impact is low, so that we probably wouldn't look at that. We have another high one on Tote Road. Oh, that's residential. But there are other roads that may have high priority that we could be looking at.
I don't know, it just seems the money... How do you know that that road has a road association?
Well, we investigate it. I just...
When's this, when are we ever going to get the money? I mean, you're going to, who's going to go investigate it?
I would think the Road Committee would be helping with that.
This is all new to us, okay?
This is just recommendations we got.
I'm just saying, this doesn't have to be the only method to give out the money. Another method could be looking at these surveys. This is, this is just, it was recommended by the guy from DEP to do. He didn't tell us not to do this.
And we're not saying we don't want to do this. We're just saying that, you know, we should probably look at these watersheds also, you know, whoever wants to do this application, get them in. Let's get this started. But as a town, we should also be looking to see if, you know, maybe there's some areas that, you know, that need to be looked at, and if there's any monies left over or whatever, then maybe we should...
Well, how are you going to proceed? What's the next step now? How are we going to proceed? We've had this money since June, been working on an application to approve this, and now...
Well, it looks like we've got the application.
We're just about ready to approve the application, so...
So, there's a couple of, so they literally just had this conversation with the attorneys at 4:00 today.
Right.
So, they have a couple of minor changes. So, is it something that we can approve the minor changes and move forward and still continue it next week with the other piece from, what, DEP? And maybe we can have another conversation with him just so you can get more information?
Yes.
They got the DEP information third-hand. It was just a recommendation from the attorney who reached out to them. So, she was fine with this. It was just another thought on top of it, but it doesn't have to hold this piece of it up?
No.
Okay.
So, I did hear Jill, Mrs. Kramer, say that she was willing to send a red line over with her minor changes.
I don't think she needs to.
You've got them, okay?
I just want to point out one thing. 3106 is specifically for maintaining areas that have already been done, as in sucking out the basins.
And you said repairing.
Pardon?
And repairing.
And repairing, exactly, which we could run into. Road associations are calling. We had talked about limiting $2,000 to each to have a start and try it. And then, there will be obviously money left over, because we've only identified 14 road associations. From there, we can look at other options. It might make sense for us to meet, rent one piece of equipment that would be good to go for several roads for sucking out these culverts, but we can do that later. Right now, to try to get some cleanup done, I think it's important, and to move it on as fast as possible.
Okay.
So, what are the board's wishes on this application and this subject? So, you want me to make the minor changes that she has?
Yep. The Jill's.
She just wanted to take the ore out and...
And add this, did you want to add that piece back in?
Yes.
Yep.
So, that's going to go back in?
Yep.
And the board of Selectmen haven't discussed an actual cap, and I know the Road Committee has kind of passed along an email. I don't know that there was a meeting unless they discussed it last night, but is that something we're putting on the application, or are you going to wait until they come in? Or what's your plan?
I really think there should be a cap.
I don't, I don't think we need to put it on the application.
Okay.
No, and I'd kind of like to see what comes in, just to see how this is all going to work.
Okay. So, we're going to get those out. There's no deadline date on it, but they're essentially going to be made available tomorrow after those couple of changes are made, and we can get them out.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Personnel policy.
Last week, our last couple of weeks, there's been some discussion regarding possible changes to time off on part-time employees. Last week, you asked that the treasurer put some information together on how that would affect the numbers. She needed some clarification on, you know, a definition of part-time. If you meant everybody, including, you know, Fire Department, if you were looking for employees that might be 15 to 20 hours, you know, that don't quite hit the 21. And I, you know, I said, well, if we did 10 to 15, what would, you know, 10 to 15 hours a week, what would that give us? And she said, well, you know, how often, how consistent? So, she's really looking for a more specific direction from the board as far as what she's trying to calculate. This is, you know, paid time off for who exactly? What departments, not who?
My personal opinion is, I like it the way it is, without any further changes.
And I would want it across the board, not just, you know...
Elise?
Yeah, I feel like it's fine the way it is. I feel, you know, part-time employees may have another part-time job that, I don't know.
Or even a full-time job.
Or even a full-time job getting paid time off.
And what happens if we start to run into, we'll say, a road employee that starts to be consistent over 21 hours a week year-round? You're going to have to...
I think the policy has it talking about so many weeks in the year.
Right, and that's what I'm saying is, if, if an employee starts to become...
Oh.
At that point, wouldn't they...
Because the transfer station, remember, we have to take an average over the year to get them to that 21 hours.
Correct.
But I'm just saying that whatever formula we're using for the transfer station, if we have to start using it on the, if we're going to start using it on the road guys, you may find that if work continues to pick up and be the way that it is, that you may have a situation that, where they're going to qualify for that based on the personnel policy.
I think if they qualify it for it, the way the personnel policy is written, then they qualify for it, just like the transfer station folks do.
Health insurance?
Mm-hmm.
Health insurance as well?
Yeah. I mean, if, if, if that's what the guys at the transfer station get, then that's the way it is.
Okay.
So...
All right, so as far as the part-time, what I'm hearing is based on a two-to-one, we're not moving forward with any changes. We'll prepare the changes regarding the HSA, and the rest of the policy will be left alone?
That's my opinion.
Okay.
Okay. Also, personnel policy. Generator truck specs.
So, the truck specs are out. We got those today. The Fire Chief proofed it, three pages. We went through some minor changes, but it is advertised now, and we have mailed it to about 30 different new dealerships in the area. So, generator will be the next one we'll tackle.
Sounds good.
All right.
All right. Got one for each of us.
Oh, that's the bids for the truck, okay. Okay. Next item is mooring ordinance.
Okay, so the board saw the emails that, that went around in regards to, I don't recall exactly who sent the original email. I want to say it was Mrs. Thibodeau, but I could be wrong. So, she sent an email. We replied saying, you know, where we felt like the Wilson Lake shore ended and that piece of it was done. She'd asked at the end of the email if the board was intending on pursuing the mooring ordinance. So, I sent that email to Mr. Lankowski for him to answer or give his thoughts on. I'm going to read you just the, what he's saying about it once again. So, it says, "Hi, Jennifer. If the board really feels that they want to pursue this, then we should meet. But in the meantime, let me try to break this down. Title 38, Section A says, 'In all harbors where channels lie that have been established by the municipal officers,' this doesn't apply to Acton, 'in all other coastal and tidal waters,' doesn't apply, 'harbors,' doesn't apply, 'in great ponds where mooring rights of individuals are claimed to be invaded and protection is sought of the harp master.' Do we even have one of these? I don't think so. The harbor master shall assign and indicate. Title 38, Section 1, governs harbor masters and requires a municipality which borders or contains territorial waters to appoint one on request by any person desiring mooring privileges or regulations." He goes on to say that, to give a definition of territorial waters. Even if a harbor master, let's see, so it says, "I'm pretty sure that Acton doesn't border on or contain any waters within the rise and fall of the tide, so there is no requirement that Acton appoint a harbor master. Even if we had a harbor master or decided to give Ken that job, the most we could do is determine whether the complaining party's mooring rights have been invaded or not. In other words, harbor master Ken first would have to, have to have something to enforce in the absence of a municipal ordinance establishing rules and regulations. The issue who gets to moor their boat and where is a private civil matter." And I did send you the three-page email with all due respect from Mr. Lankowski, that Mr. Nado, who disagreed with that and pointed out his statements as well. At this point, if you want to pursue it, Mr. Lankowski is asking that you meet with him, because he doesn't know how many times that he can tell you that he believes that it's a civil matter.
Yep. My opinion is a civil matter, and I'm going to take Mr. Lankowski's recommendation to try to do an ordinance to this. It would have to apply to every pond in town, which is a huge undertaking. And I think the way I'd like to leave it, it's up to the other two, but if anyone wants to take this further and make it into an ordinance, do it by petition.
What was that?
It said, "Do it by petition," just like the private road association one was, so... I mean, I think it's, it's an issue. I don't know if it's as big an issue as we think it might be in town. I mean, we know one area, one lake, that has an issue. I'd like to think that if they took that to the people, you know, whether they all work together on it, I think they could come up with a cure, but I do believe it's a civil issue, not an issue for us to take up.
Yeah, without an ordinance, it's, we can't enforce it, and it sounds like a civil issue right now.
I agree.
Well, I think the question was, are you willing to move forward with an ordinance?
Not right now, because we really have no way of enforcing it, I feel.
Yep.
Yeah, I know. It seems silly to have an ordinance that can't be enforced, but at the same time, I feel like that shouldn't be a reason not to have one, but that's why I said that last week.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to think that the wooden service or somebody out there can police this.
I mean, and, you know, and essentially, summer's coming to an end. I mean, it's something you can revisit at the first of the year. I mean, an ordinance like this, you would want to put on, on an annual town meeting anyways, which isn't until June. You know, I can't imagine you'd have a special town meeting for, for an ordinance like this. You may not even be able to legally, and that might give them time to consider the petition process as well.
Exactly.
It's not, not a hard process.
I'm curious if other lakes are having an issue that just, they just haven't mentioned it.
That would be nice to know.
Yep. I mean, there's what, 10 some-odd lakes in the town?
Yeah, Wilson, I can't believe would be the only one.
No, I wouldn't think, but, I mean, boating seems to be getting more popular, I think, as time goes on here. I've seen a, I have a camp on Wilson, and I've seen quite an influx of boats on the lake, so, but it's all part of enjoying the water that we have. Okay?
I'm the person that disagreed with Mr. Lankowski. Generally, the purpose of government is to protect our rights from either ourselves, our neighbors, invaders. And when I spoke to the state inland fisheries and wildlife, they wanted nothing to do with this issue. Now, from my standpoint, I have nowhere to go to get my rights enforced, other than hiring a lawyer. Now, I have this property that I'm paying high taxes on because it's waterfront, and I'm asking the town to do something to keep people from mooring their boats. It wasn't one boat. It was boats, rafts, big boats, and there's nowhere to go. I don't think it's right that the state wants to own all of the land under the lake and the water, and then abdicate its responsibility for regulating it. They've thrown it at the town. This is sort of like somebody setting up a camper out on state, state property and saying, well, the town has to take care of that, not the state. That, that wouldn't happen. All right? So, I think, I think it is a problem that the state is doing this to the town, but at the same time, you know, this is, this has been going on for a number of years now. I've been dealing this on my property since 2015. The adjacent property, I think, longer than that. I've asked them to move. They did move a little bit, but they moved on to an adjacent property. I've been on Hawk Road for over 50 years. We have very small lots over there, 50 feet apiece, and somehow, we make it work where we're not encroaching on other people's properties or their waterfront rights. And I've never had, in all my time in Acton, such inconsiderate neighbors. I own old Acton airfield, 115 or so acres. I've never posted that. I invite people to come and use that as an open park. I've got a small parcel on Wilson Lake I've been trying to protect for water life, and I've got, I've got neighbors that don't care about that. The waterfowl have been nesting in there. I've been paying taxes on it, and I'm asking the town, I mean, enforce it. Also, it would take with the constable or the code enforcement officer to call and say, you have to move your mooring. I guarantee that's what, that's all it would take. It wouldn't be much. I don't think it's a huge problem yet, and I think if you start enforcing it, you'll be nipping it in the butt, but there's more and more boats on these lakes. There's going to be, there was a suit over in Naples where somebody had a couple of moorings on their property and let one of the boats on a mooring encroach on somebody else's waterfront, and it went to a suit. And based on that suit, Naples enforced a, I think you were provided with that, with that ordinance.
Yes, I have it.
And Acton has so many, so many bodies of water that this is going to be a problem. We're showing you that it's a problem. It has been a problem for a number of years in one spot, right? But on Hawk Road, there's a couple of open lots over there, and nobody comes and decides to put a mooring on an open lot, but this has happened on the other side of the lake on a much bigger lot. Okay, so, I'm asking you to do something about this for those of us that are paying a whole lot of money for taxes on the waterfront with a lot of restrictions.
Thank you.
Anything else on this? Nope, anything else?
Am I leaving it on the agenda or removing it?
I'd say move it until someone comes forward with a petition.
Okay.
Or until we decide to look into it further. I may ask a few of the other lake associations to see if they have issues, but I'll do that.
Do you want me to find out of any of the surrounding, I mean?
Sure.
That would be...
Maybe you can revisit it in a couple of months, or?
Yep, sounds good. Yeah, we'll see if they have any other situations out there and see what's going on. Okay, what's that?
Yep.
Canal Bridge.
I dropped the four-inch folder off to Mr. Moran's office. That was, he asked for an opinion as to whether or not the town of Acton owned it or where the ownership was, so that's been, it's in his hands and we're waiting for a response.
Okay. That's over there?
Yes.
ACO position.
So last week I told you he was resigning, this week he gave me an actual written resignation. We need a plan.
This is true.
Because he, I think, would have liked to have been done last week. He is, he came in today, I did handle a couple of calls for him to try to help alleviate some situations, but there are a lot of, a lot of things going on, domesticated animal related in this town right now, so.
Okay.
I hate to put this on you like this, but my next email is going to be the main municipal asking if we don't have one, who the backup's going to be, and I have a feeling it's going to be the municipal officer, so.
Okay. Let us read this, "September 11, 2018, Town of Acton to make concern, effective September 2018, I can no longer fulfill the duties of the Town of Acton Animal Control Officer. I was grateful for the opportunity to have done this, respectfully submitted, Wayne Ham." He didn't put an actual date.
Yeah, he wanted to backdate it and I wouldn't let him. He's hanging on by thread, he's doing all right.
I think we just signed his...
August.
Oh, that was August.
That was August period we just signed, yep.
Okay, okay.
He's hanging on, I think if I can help with some calls, at least the calls that don't require his visits, I might be able to keep him.
So we are looking for an ACO?
I've got it advertised, it's in the newspaper, I'm doing everything I can, Wayne.
Okay.
Hang in there.
I mean, we would consider two, splitting the job if it was...
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, it would be nice maybe to have two people, so it's not quite so...
Twenty-four seven.
There, I mean, I told, did I tell you, he's got, I think it was six or seven dogs in quarantine right now, in quarantine. That means that they actually had to bite somebody to be in quarantine.
I saw the mileage chart and he put a description on, so.
So you accepted that with regret, I understand?
We had talked, as far as this position, we talked a little bit about maybe trying to split it and, you know, trying to figure out, you know, how the calls would work and stuff like that, and I mean, maybe if we did have two positions, maybe we could get a phones that's just one number so that whoever's working takes that phone with them.
Right.
I don't know.
Well, you could do seven days on, seven days off, seven days...
Something like that.
And he would go with, like, the backpack, didn't he have, like, a backpack with some equipment?
Yeah, that was, yep.
Yes, but, I mean...
Yeah, but no, yeah, that was passed down from things the town had bought, and if we can get some resumes in, then certainly that can, that can be an option.
Yep. Okay. New business, general assistance.
All right, so I need you to officially adopt the ordinances, the general assistance ordinance, we can follow that.
This is the ordinance for general assistance that we talked about earlier with the public hearing. Do I hear a motion to adopt as it was presented earlier?
I make a motion to adopt the general assistance ordinance for the 2018-19.
I'll second that.
Move to second it to adopt the general assistance ordinance for 2018-19 for the discussion. Call for a vote. Actually, I need, I did a motion, you did the motion, you seconded it. Vote, all in favor, all opposed? Next item is the road committee's presentation. They worked diligently on the items for the town, this is their presentation that they have for us.
I'm Cindy Hart, Chair of the Road Committee. I'd like to just thank the people that helped us and did this. Leslie Berlin, Ken Wen, Arnie Murray, and Chuck Gregory, who prepared this, and really turned it over to Chuck now with the PowerPoint. We inventoried all the town roads for their conditions, and I think we have some good news for you. There's a way to save some real money for the town here.
Earlier this summer, we received a version of the software, the road and sign management system from the state, it's called RMS 16, version 16. It's available to everyone who has access to the network or to the laptop where there's a version of it, and whenever the network and the laptop are synced together, they're both up to date, and that should happen automatically when it gets onto the network. The laptop is used to go out and actually do the surveys on the roads so that we can have it and we can actually input the information as it comes in. We, in, we spent a couple of days doing the survey. The first day that we did it, we had a state representative with us to show us to make sure that we were doing it properly. The laptop-based system is used to take out on the road and we can input information directly into the system so that it has it up to date based on whatever survey is being done. The first survey that we did, we went along and did the gravel, I'm sorry, the paved roads, and a survey form was filled out rather than doing it online because we had so many roads in to go through. The types of things that we looked for were alligator cracking, edge cracking, roughness in the road, the drainage, longitude and transverse cracking, patches and pothole and rutting. On gravel roads, we look for whether it was rock or clay, whether it was loose aggregate, potholes, cross-sectioning, rutting, corrugations, dust, and roadside drainage. As we went through this, we indicated how badly any of these issues were. We could indicate how bad it was by low, medium, or high, and the extent of it based on whether it was less than ten percent of the road, ten to thirty percent, or greater than thirty percent. Those numbers were actually used as an, into an algorithm that's part of the system and indicates what roads need to have some attention, whether it be on drainage or on the road surface itself. As I said, we entered this information into the system after we had done all of it. Afterwards, we also got a report from the bus company to find out what roads are actually used for the busing of students for the high school and the grade school, and we input that information into the system as well. And we also used the average, the annual average daily traffic, or ADAT DT, that's provided by the state that tells us how much activity, road activity there is for cars. Not sure how they actually captured information for trucks, which is a large problem here in town, and we need to find out a little bit more about that and through the AADT. And we've also talked about collecting more information by doing our own surveys as far as road activity, by putting out our own measures. Once the information is input into the RSMS, these are the different types of reports, there's fourteen different reports. Some of them are by the different type of road. We have forty-six miles of paved road in town and approximately two miles of gravel roads, so it's predominantly paved, and these reports actually break it down by each type of road. We have an inventory of all the roads now, and all the public roads in the system, and we're, the algorithm has been used to calculate what type of attention needs to be done with each of them. You can see that that first report there, there's the road condition curve report, if you could go back, Jennifer, one page. What that does is it tells us, it doesn't, this isn't an example, but... Okay, you just go... What the curve does is it tells us what parts of the road or what percentage of the roads are actually, that's it. The first report there, road condition decline curve, again, this is a, this is a report that comes out of the system and it tells us what reports, I'm sorry, what roads need to have preventive maintenance, regular maintenance, and those that need rehabilitation or reconstruction. And it looks as if the majority of the roads are in, the roads themselves are in good shape. The biggest problem we have are the drainage around the roads. The shoulders are bad in a lot of different places, some of them are very good, but others are bad, and we feel that having these shoulders in good condition helps support the road and keeps it from, particularly from edge cracking, and will also help it from either a longitude or transverse crack, keep it from converting into a, an alligator crack which becomes much more serious. It, the alligator cracks cause the road to crack up a little bit more easily, actually pieces of the pavement can actually be chipped out by cars or trucks going over it and ultimately cause potholes or ruts in the road. While we were doing this, we went, we also looked at the bridges that we have in town, and four main bridges that we looked at were Row Bridge, Milton Mills Bridge, and that is a state-controlled one, it's not a municipal one, West Shore Bridge, and Canal Bridge. Just by looking at the roads, or by the, looking at the bridges, we can see that there's a lot of general work that needs to be done. Most of them require some type of maintenance on the, on the bridge itself. We also noticed there's a problem with the environment around the bridge. There's trees growing up very close to the bridge if they ever fall down, and in fact, on the Row Bridge, there's a dead tree that is hanging right over the top of the bridge and hanging on electrical wires as well. We've seen holes in some of the bridge surfaces where it actually goes down into the bridge itself and you could actually put your hand in the hole and feel underneath the bridge surface. What we'd like to do, the road committee would like to do, is set up a committee of road committee members, it doesn't have to be all of them, but some from them, road commissioners, and someone from the Board of Selectmen to actually go through the reports and determine what the best action is for moving forward. I think we should have somewhere between a three and a five-year plan. The best would be a five-year plan in looking for funding for the future, for both the bridges and the pavement, and what we can do is put together a plan and then present that to the Board of Selectmen so that they can look at it and determine what would be the best way as far as moving forward with this infrastructure plan so that we can budget properly for both bridges and roads, and what type of maintenance needs to be done on them, whether it be just remedial-type work, crack sealing, or whether it needs to be a major effort of rehabilitation or reconstruction. And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much for that. That was a tremendous amount of work put into it. Police, you know more about this than probably any of us.
No, I learned a lot last, well, a lot last night, but I guess, as we recommended by the road committee after doing the survey, is to have, have the sit-down with the road commissioners, the road committee and the selectmen, sounds like a great plan, just to kind of look at it, the different reports that were spit out, and what, what, what roads need attention and where. You know, this is my third year in the position and it's taken me about that long to realize that this is one town and one, it should be one road budget, not two. I've always, you know, I'm learning that the sides of Acton are not created equal and one side may need more attention than the other side, and to split the budget in half doesn't seem sensible to me. I feel like we should be looking at the roads of Acton as one and not two, and this system is one way to do it. I'm not saying that we should just have one road commissioner either. What I'm saying is we need to work together and try to figure out how to not split the town in half down the middle. It could be split by projects or, you know, different jobs, not necessarily down the middle of north and south or whatever.
Right, one side could, may need a lot more work than the other side, and, you know, I know we've heard that, like, you know, it's a twenty-year plan because you have to, I mean, every year you're only getting so much money, but you might need to spend more than that because your roads are, you know, in poor repair versus maybe the other side. Not as, sorry. I was just saying that, you know, maybe one side, where we split the budget, paving, you know, it takes somebody ten, twenty years to have a plan to try to, you know, get these roads taken care of, and maybe, you know, one side may need more money, you know, maybe they're in dire need, their roads, versus, you know, maybe the other side is holding up better. I don't, I don't know, but I mean, with all this information and stuff, maybe it would, you know, help, it would just be nice if we could all get together and go over the information and kind of...
Yeah, I know one of our road commissioners had said he was on a twenty-year plan, and by the time he got around to the twentieth year, he's got other roads that have already fallen apart.
Right.
So, yeah.
And there's, you know, really no good time to say this, but I, you know, I said it to you guys before the meeting, and I told the road commissioner that I was going to say it on the meeting if it came up, but District One Road Commissioner is not willing to sit down with the road committee and the selectmen regarding this program. He feels like he was elected and he does his job, and so don't plan meetings, but, you know what I mean, I just don't want to see you pre-plan out based on trying to get them together. He's made it very clear that he will not be part of that.
Right, and my response to that was be part of the cure, not part of the problem, so...
I'm just passing along, I have that lovely job.
Exactly, no, it's frustrating, it's very frustrating. We have two road commissioners, one of them has met the requirements that both the warrant finance and ourselves have asked, wasn't demanded, it was simply asked. We have another one that just refuses to do anything for us, except what he thinks needs to be done on the roads, which may or may not be the right thing to do.
And he feels like that's why he was elected, I mean, he answers to the people and he welcomes people to call him, I want to make sure that's not, that's clear, he just doesn't feel like he needs to meet with a committee or answer to a committee.
Right, and back along, several years ago, we put it out to the people, and I'll stress that, to the people, to see if we needed a road committee, and it came back that we do. So let's give the road committee a job to do, and they've got a job to do, they've come up and they've...
They've done a lot of work.
Found some things that need to be done. It's time to get over the pettiness. I'm getting frustrated here, folks.
I'd like to point out that it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, you can correct me, but the road commissioners have been given budgets in the past, and I know Dave has worked with it very, you know, very stringently, but bottom line, the budget is controlled by the Board of Selectmen, and that when Dave gives you or Scott gives you something that they want to do, it's up to you to approve the money for doing it rather than just going out and doing it. That's my understanding of how it should work, and if there's activities that need to be done, and using the north-south as the criteria, if more money is required for the south, then Dave should get a bigger budget for the south, and Scott has a lesser budget to work with for all of his activities up there, and we need to enforce that. That's my opinion of what's...
Very, that is correct.
Right, but remember, I mean, the road commissioners have never had to, I mean, they've never, you know, this is new to them, they haven't had to come to the board. I mean, if District, we'll say two, because David's here, if District Two was going to pave a particular road, I mean, he appropriated... pave a particular road, I mean, he appropriated it in his funds, he knew it was part of his project, he goes out and does it, we do the bills, we get the bills when he's done. So they don't, you know, they're not getting the bills prior to. I mean, they were elected and they believe they were elected to do A, B, and C, they do that and they get the bills afterwards. So, it's, you know, in their defense, the Road Commissioners' defense, I mean, that's how it's always worked, so there really needs to be a lot of communication.
Right.
I agree that's, I agree that's the way that it did work. The point now is, is that how we want it to work in the future. And again, Dave's followed the rules and put together his plans and all that kind of stuff. What we need to do is make that a little bit more of a comprehensive plan over multiple years, and look at other things besides just general paving, and look at things like crack sealing and things like that, or doing spot patches rather than doing, you know, nine-tenths of a road or something like that. And that needs to be, before anything, that plan needs to be approved by the Board of Selectmen before it can be started to be implemented by the Road Commissioners.
Another thing so the Board is aware that came up, I mean, as you recall, months ago, you created a five-question survey in regards to property maintenance and whether the people felt like, you know, we should get more people involved, or we should just let it be and let the jobs be done how the current zoning sits. One of the Road Commissioners, and possibly both, we might have had these conversations, you know, have we, has the Board considered through tax time and November election drafting up five questions to see if the voters feel like they should, you know, they should get another committee involved in what they believe is their jobs to do? Just a thought.
Not a bad idea.
Raffle me from the audience.
I know, back along, you know, a few weeks ago, I said I didn't like the idea, but the more I think about it...
Well, I thought that's what was presented, and that's why the Road Committee was actually created.
It was presented to the people to ask, do you still want a Road Committee? And they said yes, but at the same time, we also, the school, the other larger budget in this town is the school, and they have a committee that guides the teachers and the superintendent on what they're supposed to be doing. I don't see why the Road Committee can't guide and supervise what the Road Commissioners are doing.
Yeah, I mean...
That's just, I mean, yeah, they used to do something in the past.
There's a difference between the School Committee and the Principal. The Principal's hired by the Town of Acton, okay, they're an employee. Back when Scott and I ran for this job, I don't know how many years or whatever, but we were under the assumption that we were elected to come forward at town meeting with a budget and act on it. You know, we're at a town meeting this year, you asked for whatever and we gave, gave to you whatever. You know, obviously, you know, there's got to be some sort of connection, but at the same time, if the Selectmen and the Road Committee control an elected official, it's a different scenario than where you're talking at the school by a long shot.
Well, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say control, it's more of a working together.
What you need, what you really need in this situation is you need a hired road agent. That's the only way this would work without having any conflict, because at this point, like me, okay, I gave you my plan, I gave you a five-year plan already, okay? I've changed that plan a little bit, okay, because of a road that is in dire need of repair. So, I have taken, I am pricing out right now, we're already prepping the road for hot top, heavy shim for the winter time, so we can plow that road, and then I'm going to take the rest of the funds and go over here, but if I come to you guys and then have to go to the Road Committee to make these, it's a quagmire. And, why was I elected?
I think they were saying something about at budget time getting it together.
Oh, I understand budget time, budget time makes complete sense to me, I have no issue with that. And, but at the same time, when you have an elected official, I'm just trying to point this out.
Right.
Because at this point, whatever, you know, but if you take an elected official and you override that elected official with your powers with another committee, and he wants to do something else, and he doesn't get to do what he wants to do, and he loses his next election, it just, it is a lot, 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 lot more involved than you think it is. And, you know, we get the phone calls, why ain't my road paved, why ain't this done, why ain't that done? And there's a lot of stuff that I like to do. I look at my numbers and go, okay, well, like the crack ceiling, you know, I'm already made phone calls, okay, I'm waiting for prices to bat, but do I take this chunk of money? Because the biggest problem we've had here is the lack of budgeting through the last 10 years. And every time that I would come to you and say, okay, you know, we're going to put in more paving, no, we're flatlining. So, you can, you can go to the Road Committee and they can advise all you want, and this is your problem, you know, because we've been inhibited over the years to do that. I do understand that, say, if Scott needs more paving than I do, okay, then that should be the case, but that should be the case for us to come in with our budget and let the town figure that out, okay? We shouldn't come in all the time with the same numbers. That's not budgeting. That's not budgeting at all, because, you know...
No, it would be nice if you did, what do I want to call it, your homework or whatever, got ready, like, got ready for those town meetings, and this is what I need, this is what I'm putting in for, I don't know if that's something...
If you look at my list of the five or six projects that I listed, I think there's more than that, but you look, I gave you a price, a rough estimate price, because in six years, the cost is gonna, you know, gonna fluctuate so much, I'm giving you rough ideas, but, you know, I could see the RSMS system there, I understand, you know, it's showing this, showing that, this and that, there's reason why a lot of those ain't getting done, it's not just because of lack of want to, it's lack of money.
We understand that, definitely.
You know, like this year, what I'm, what I'm gonna, what I, and I'm at a position right now where I don't even know what I'm able to and not able to do. There's so much confusion here in my part, because I want to...
You're able to do your job, we're not telling you any different.
Nothing's changed, David.
Nothing has changed, you know.
But, you know, you take this project where I've swapped projects, I didn't want to do this, but I was kind of forced to because of the situation, and then I have another budget where I've always been able to make my budget work, okay, and I've rolled over some money to make this project work, and I want to be able to take some money out of this line, which we've always a lot been able to do, and every time I do this, I go to the, I go to our treasurer and say, am I allowed to do this? And she makes sure I can. And I just don't want to have too many fingers in the mix to the point where I don't know what my job is.
I don't think that fingers should be in the mix, but I, they've worked hard, and something that...
No, and I understand that.
And I think that, you know, it's a good program, I think it's a recommendation to try to say, hey, you know, we've got all this information, sit down, all of us talk, I mean, and say, you know, for next year, I mean, okay, maybe to help you too, I mean...
No, I mean, it's, I put in my five-year budget, a five-year plan, they can come in with their five-year plan, it's whether or not you guys, you guys, from sounds of it, you guys are going to have to say over that, and that puts, that might put me in a spot. I think what we're looking at here is, in so many words, is we're looking for a full-time guy to do this job, and that maybe is something that the Road Committee should be looking at too.
I think as far as the, you know, your five-year plan and what may be their five-year plan, and you say that, you know, when you come forward with things you want to do and there may not be money for it, if they're, if you work together with the Road Committee, especially with the RSMS plan, you may find that yours and theirs, I don't want to use yours and theirs, it's still the Town of Acton, it's probably the same.
Yeah, I thought it would be.
And the benefit is, you know, there's another, there's another set of eyes that's seen it and said, hey, look at, this needs to be done. Yes, I believe if you come to me and you say you have a plan and this is, you know, XYZ road needs to be done, I'm not going to second-guess it. It's like, okay, you're the Road Commissioner, that's what needs to be done. You know, I'd hope that it would be on their plan as well, so I'd like to see this whole thing work together. I think it, 50% of the Road Commissioners, it will work. I'm not sure about the other 50%, so. As far as the town, having a full-time Road Commissioner, it's a great dream, I don't know if we have the money to do it, or have a full-time road, highway, full-time highway.
It's later on agenda.
Yeah, well, no, that's a little different down below there, so, but, anyway, I do want to thank the Road Committee for doing what they did with the RSMS. I hope there's many copies of it out there, I wasn't at the meeting last night, I'd like to get a copy of the...
One of these, I think there might be another one left over.
That'd be good, so.
I'll put one in your box.
Jen, get me a copy of that.
What about getting...
So...
Together, or...
Yeah.
I think that is a good idea.
Get together.
The Road Committee, or at least a subcommittee of the Road Committee, and one of the Selectmen.
And hopefully, Road Commissioner or two would be nice.
Two would be great.
Yep.
I haven't been involved with it, I mean, I've been overviewed it, but Elise has been in the heart of all this, so I don't know.
I'll go too, I mean, I don't have a...
Okay, I mean, it should be one person, it should be the lead Selectmen on it, so, almost like the liaison, if you will.
Right, which I am.
Yeah.
So, you got that, so, I'll look forward to seeing the information come back, but I think, I think a, I think a subcommittee would be great, so...
So, just so I'm clear, this is a subcommittee to work on the RSMS?
We don't need a subcommittee.
Or is it just the Road Committee?
Or just the Road Committee, I mean, the presentation said maybe some members of it, so that's why I said subcommittee, so...
A representative of Commissioners and Committee and Selectmen.
Okay, yeah, I'm all in favor of that.
So we're going to schedule a meeting with, so my understanding, so two Road Commissioners, one Selectmen, and one member of the Road Committee?
As many members...
Or you're going to open it up to everybody?
As many members of the Road Committee as wants to be involved, I would say.
So it'll be the Road Committee, got it.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't have to be the whole committee, but...
Right.
All right, so we'll schedule a date and...
Yeah.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Okay, anything else on that?
No, thank you.
Thank you for all you had worked.
Thanks, appreciate it. Goat Hill Open House, that is...
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow. Go ahead and read that.
Sure. All right, so Wednesday, September 12th, from 4:00 to 7:00, at Romac Orchard slash Goat Hill, free and all are welcome. Let's see here, we got a little bit more here, Forever Farm Party, I guess they're just kind of having a "we're open" celebration type of...
Some tours, there's going to be wine and apples and apple cider, and they do have, remember, their temporary liquor license, they want all types of people to come in and look at what they've done with it.
Farm land protection, all right, so Maine Farmland Trust invites you to celebrate, invites you to a celebration of farmland protection and community collaboration. So, if anybody isn't doing anything tomorrow night, swing by and see what they have to offer.
No, I'm just curious, they have the parking lot to hike the trail up, but you can drive up to this event, I'm assuming?
I am not sure, well, it says...
Like, if you want to go pick apples, you would drive up in?
Maybe you could pull into like Romac, can you walk up that way?
Yeah.
They don't really have that on here.
There's a larger flyer in the hall.
Okay.
Okay. Jim needs.
So I know the Selectmen have said over and over a couple of times throughout the years that they don't want to spend taxpayer money on the fitness center. We do charge people to use it, other than fire and rescue who are exempt. However, if we are continuing to charge people to use the gym, we're going to kind of need to do some maintenance to it, because as things break or need to be repaired, I mean, it's, you know, it's not really fair for them to, us to be taking their money for, and us not maintain it. So, the good news right now is probably keep it under $500, hoping to take it out of building maintenance. There is just a small list of things that need to be done regarding the trim of the outside interior, exterior door. If you remember, we had a flood several years ago and some of that shoot rock on the inside is breaking off. Nothing that needs a building permit, all being done by volunteers, it's just some tidying here and there, but $500 would allow those things to get done and let someone from Workout Fitness in Portland come out and really give us an opinion on the, some of the equipment, because it's, you know, if it's not maintained, then it's just going to keep getting unplugged and do not use, your revenues are going to go down, and even if we had no revenues and we were doing it just for fire and rescue, you know, we can't allow people to use it if it's, there's a...
That one needs to be taken care of.
Is part of that repair replacing the particle board that rotted out?
Inside?
Outside.
Not all of that, no, but I can get a price on that.
I think there's one piece out there that might have been backed into...
I think there is one piece being replaced.
Where one of the overhead doors were.
I was just looking for a four-by-eight sheet of it, I'll have to double check where it is, but, I mean, it's, you know, I don't, you know, I don't know how much money the Board is willing to, you know, wants to put in, and I feel like that's a really reasonable request, that small amount.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, I mean, it's still a town building, we need to maintain it.
Yeah.
Right, as long as you're going to...
Don't want to close it down, and if you haven't paid your membership yet because you've forgotten, please do so.
Yeah, that's going to be the next thing we need to...
You need revenue.
We need to figure out because, we're going to, I mean, I guess at this point if I...
If you give me a list, I'll do random checks.
We're going to have to, because we're, I'm getting a lot of complaints that Johnny's over there never signed up, and it's not so much about the money, it's liability getting the form, so even if you're in a financial need and you really want to use a gym, come speak to us, we'll find something for you to do. Please sign the form so that you're not, in case you're injured. So, $500, you're good?
It's fine.
Sounds good.
Yep, thank you to the volunteers that are willing to do the work.
Yes.
It's wonderful. Propane, 1819.
So, I reached out, I live at the company, I reached out to the company, actually, two things. Someone from the church approached me and asked me if we would consider allowing them to be part of our competitive bid process. Essentially, we've gone out to bid for 10,000 gallons over the last X amount of years. The church's propane tank is on the exact same property, so they'd be filling it, so can we go out to bid for the 11,000 gallons, hoping to maybe get us both a better price, and they would still bill separately and they'd be on their own. I did reach out to the company that we're currently using, there is an increase in it. You know, I guess I'm torn, I don't really want to announce what the prices are because I want to, I don't know if you want to go out to bid, so it's been three years since we've gone out to bid, we've just renewed the contract with the other company who has been very good to us, but there is a substantial, and I'll pass this to you so you can see that, an increase, but we know that with fuel anyways, so let me just underline this, and, so these are last year's, and this is the proposed, so you can decide if you want me to go out to bid, and then we've reached out to a bunch of propane companies.
Yeah, it's just not going up.
I mean, last, last year...
That's even with an extra thousand gallons.
Wow.
Yeah, I know last, well, last year they gave us a smoking deal on it, it was unbelievable. So, you said we did renew with these folks this year, or?
No, we haven't, we, three years ago, we went out to bid, the last two years, we just renewed because they kept it within a few pennies.
Yep, yep.
I mean, the economics and everything's changed.
I think it's probably worth, like I said, it's been three years, I think it's worth going out to bid. Like I say, last year's price was extremely low.
They were good, yep.
Yeah.
Times have changed a little, and they may still be low, but...
Yep, we've got some new companies in the area and whatnot, so, yeah, I'd definitely go out to bid.
Yeah, so I'm just going to use the same generic form that we've used in the past, change some dates, put it out there, and I'll have to bring it back to you, I'm just going to get advertising for a few weeks.
Yep. Okay. Coats and boot drive.
So, some of you might have noticed, I think that it's been around Facebook, and there's a few flyers, a couple of local residents have put together what they're calling a coat and boot drive, we're taking gently-used coats and boots. What our plan is, is that to pick a day at the end of September, excuse me, and have them all displayed here, we're going to hang the coats up, put all the shoes out, and let the public or the town come in and take whatever they want free, should anybody need a coat or a hat or boots, or we've got a variety of things that have come in, clothes, and anything after we advertise for the town to come in for a day or two, then all of this stuff will be boxed up and taken up to the Preble Street Homeless Shelter in Portland, who is in desperate need of winter stuff. So, if you have anything laying around, an old coat or boots, or just wanted to get some socks or something, you can bring those in to us, we will open it up to Acton residents to have first choice, anybody can come in confidentially and see me, or we'll, like I said, we'll open it up on a Saturday or Sunday, just to come in, and then from there we'll box it up to the shelter.
Sounds great. Okay.
And don't forget, oops, sorry, Neighbors Helping Neighbors is coming up, September 22nd, if you haven't bought your tickets yet. Hint, hint, Ed, Kim?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Elise.
I think I'll buy two more.
What a girl, and we did, we tried...
Showing us up.
We did increase the stakes a little bit, the town hall staff, you know, we do, we are a little competitive here, the girls in the office, so we have challenged the gentlemen and gentle, and the women at the fire department to see who can sell their tickets first. We both have 125 tickets, I think, to sell, so, I won't tell you what the loser has to do yet, but, so, buy your tickets at the town hall.
Okay.
So, on September 22nd, Greg Martinez is at Iron Tales, is going to put on an event, it's a, he's got the Ron Jones Band coming, live music, food and entertainment, of course, entertainment, of course, the food and alcohol, you know, you'll pay for your own, but the tickets to get in, ten dollars, he's donating a hundred percent of the profits to Neighbors Helping Neighbors. Thank you.
Very generous of him.
Yes.
Okay, IMG, road commissioners.
So that was thrown on, um, literally about ten seconds before we walked out here, um, just so the, the board is aware, I had already invited District One, per the Road Association funds on there, and I also, um, called him before the meeting to let him know that you literally threw that on there, beginning conversations about intermittent contractors versus departments.
True. I actually asked to put this on. For the last, oh, I don't know, five plus years, our auditor has come to us and said, why do we do it this way? Why do we own the people, but yet the road commissioners or another contractor own the, own the equipment? Um, the auditor sees a liability in doing that, both in workman's comp and in just general, just general liability. Um, yes, we have control over the, somewhat control over the employees, but we don't have any control over the vehicles that's being driven, or the work that's being done. Um, so I asked to put this on, and I wanna, I wanna open it up to see, why can't we change this and have the employees, the employees of the contractor? Now, we do have a couple of folks that plow for us that are truly independent contractors. They come in with their own truck, we pay for the truck and driver to them, um, but it's only one or two of them. Um, so, I'm just opening it up to see what the thoughts are. Um, I feel it would be much better if we have them independent contractors, if we just simply, if a road commissioner does a job, he hires, whether it's his own company or whether it's another company, they come in, they do the work, uh, they give us a bill, and it's within budget, we pay it, and it gets done. Uh, the manpower is their responsibility, both in workman's comp, full liability, drug policy, and payroll. And it takes all that right off the town. Any, any one part of that can be a huge liability to the town. Um, so, that being said, um, what's the thoughts? You know, where do we go from here?
Well, when you say it that way, I have to agree with you, but at the same time, I, I'm not sure how that would look. I, I, I like to see what we're signing each week, I like to see the money, where they worked, what they did, um, what machines they used, you know, I, that's information, that's history, it's, gets recorded.
And I also like the transparency.
And I think we still could require that.
Right.
You know, I mean, if you have a contractor come to your house to replace your system, you're gonna know what, you know, his quote's gonna have on it, you know, so many hours with excavation, so much dirt, so much gravel, so much stone, you know, it's gonna be the same type of thing. And, you know, nothing says that we couldn't, well, no, let's just leave it out, leave it full that way. I was gonna say we could buy stony gravel, but no, let's just leave it full the other way, so.
No, I mean, any, any invoice that you would have, you'd wanna have, you know, such and such person to do, just for record, so that if anything down the road happened, that you, you have record. Any invoice would have a piece of machinery, but you could have, you know, that piece of machinery's, I got the operator, it's all included, you know, you're gonna have all the same thing you would have now, pretty much the same idea, except you're just not sticking your neck out quite like we are right now. So, um, in the, in the long run, I agree with it, um, it takes away, there's so many different dimensions of this, that, you know, you've got employees or workman's comp issues that you, you don't have to worry about, when they're on a private job, on a town job, you don't know where it happened, stuff like that, just little instances at the end of the day where, um, you know, I've got, I've got six, uh, I've got seven guys that work for me, and only a couple of them work for just the town of Acton. And, but, I, I got guys that'll be on one job one day and on another job, on a town job the next day, and, you know, it's, it's not fair to them, because what happens with me is, say I work a guy thirty-five hours for me, and then I put him on the town doing a job, and he works ten hours, well, he's screwed on five hours overtime, you know? It, it's, it's all that little stuff there, that, at the end of the day, the town of Acton did away with the town employee, we don't have to worry about the MMA, um, you know, um, courses that seem to be ta, being taken all the time and not utilized, a lot, a lot of money's being wasted on that. Our drug, drug policies, well, bogus, it doesn't work. And, um, it doesn't, not that it doesn't work, it's not, it's not being able to run properly because of the way it's set up. And, you know, I've got, I, my guys are already on the drug policy for, for my CDL drivers, theoretically, my guys have to take, could in one week take two tests, one for you guys and one for driving my trucks, the same truck, but they have to take two tests. I, I agree with that, and I believe it's something that, you know, we should do, there would have to be some, some management on the wages, on the personnel wages, it's all the equipment wages already there, but the personnel wages themselves, because of the workman's comp and stuff like that, we'd have to have Michelle do some figuring and this and that to see where that compensation could be made, but, um, I do agree with it.
Yeah, I mean, that's all a percentage, so, you know, your workman's comp is usually a percentage of your, your gross labor rate, uh, along with your, your, uh, social security and FICAR and all the taxes and whatnot. I mean, that number, if you have a driver that, truck driver that's eighteen dollars an hour, that right now on paper, it looks like we're paying eighteen dollars an hour, we're, we're still paying the workman's comp, we're still paying the, you know, all the payroll taxes and whatnot, those numbers would just simply be rolled into that eighteen dollars, so instead of the, the driver, instead of the contractor getting eighteen dollars for that man, he'd get a check for, you know, you know, twenty-two dollars or whatever it may be by the time you add it all up, so, per hour. It, but it, it would work out to be the exact same thing on our side. You know, it's no, there's no change in the dollar amounts we pay, it's not gonna be more, it's gonna be the same dollar amount, it's just gonna be one number instead of, you know, four or five.
So how would they...
So how would we know? And I'm just saying, okay, just say, um, somebody's getting paid eighteen now, but all right, now we're gonna move it up to twenty-two, because we're not paying them, they are. How do we know that person?
That's not gonna be our responsibility.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, it's, it's gonna be to the contractor to, to pay his man what he...
Right.
So are you think, hold on, David, are you thinking, Ed, that this, so is this per job or per the whole, I mean, so let's just say, for example, um, David needs to do all of his fall cleanups, whatever that involves, and I don't know. I mean, does he, so is he gonna submit one bill for all fall cleanup?
He'd do the work, he'd submit a bill and...
And we'd just pay him a lump sum and he would...
Pay him a lump sum?
Pay, so each, every time he'd do a different job, he'd submit one bill?
Right, right, one bill, but broken down. So in other words, if he went down, if he was doing Hopper Road, for instance, and he was replacing culverts and doing some roadside mowing?
Mm-hmm.
He'd have it broken down for the cost of the culverts, you know, the roadside mowing, um, you know, the, anything goes along with the culverts, roadside mowing would be a mower and a, and a man, whatever it, it would be itemized.
I mean, the materials, the materials you still want paid by the town of Acton.
We could do that, that's what I was getting to earlier.
You have to, for the simple reason is, like myself, you, the problem is with the materials is your taxing exempt.
True.
Okay? And you, the town gets state rates and stuff like that, so we, we, we're just talking about employees at this point here. And it'd be no different, right now, we're already subbing out somewhat, subbing out the equipment anyways. This guy has a piece of equipment, instead of, you know, I'll use my father for example, he does a lot of my ditching for me with his excavator. Right now, he's gonna check for this, and then he's getting a check for that. Instead, you have one check, it's just added in. We don't have to worry about the, the pers, personnel issues that we've, we've, we've had in the past, with people being certain, paid certain amounts of money with experiences, and some people not being paid.
It would all be up to the contract.
It's up to the contract at this point, because the problem is, it, it's not fair, especially in the system that we're in, that somebody gets hired at this rate, when this guy's been working for this many years, but the going rate is this, it, it helps control what, what's being paid out. You know, you're gonna need a labor rate for flagging and stuff like that, but the, each piece of equipment will obviously be an operator, if it's an excavator or tractor or skid steer. If it's a truck, it's gonna be a truck driver. And, and you just gotta come up with that number to make sure that, you know, um, you take an average of what the guys are being paid now, and, and you can figure that easy, but it takes away from all the, the crap that's been going on. And, uh, you guys could pay them, pay the guys whatever they want, you know, if they feel like paying the guys forty dollars an hour and they're only making fifty on a piece of machinery, that's their problem.
Yeah.
But right now, s, the way it's worked is kinda screwy.
And didn't, didn't we ask Legal what they thought of that? And I don't remember what his response was.
It was favorable, that this is the right way it should go.
But did he think we had to have town meeting approval?
That I haven't heard an answer to.